Okay, let's call a meeting to order and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. First hour on our agenda tonight is to take a vote to place BBT debt exclusion question on the ballot. Any questions? All set?
Any questions?
No questions, we'll take the motion.
I move that the board vote to place question one as presented on the 2024 annual election ballot.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action. We also have an acceptance of gifts and donations to from the ESS director.
I moved that the board.
I have a spot of food pantry. I think Tanya is here first.
Oh, there she is.
Hello, good evening. So thank you guys for the time. As you see here that we had two gifts that came in since I started. And so this is the first time I've had to present them. So the two gifts I'm currently looking for to be accepted were four $25 Market Basket gift cards that came in, as well as two $10 gift cards that came in, all to sponsor the food pantry. And then just as a side note, because it was too late to get it on here, as we had more come in today, $10 gift cards to Target that were accepted. So I don't know, moving forward, if we're going to continue to itemize per meeting or just food for thought out there of how to continue to manage the donations.
Okay, so what's the total amount of funding? How many, how much is, are the gift cards you'd like approved tonight? How much in total?
So the total on the memorandum is 120. I don't know process wise if we can throw in the other two tonight, or if you want me to hold off and put those for the next meeting. That's totally fine.
I think we can do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what were the total financial prospects?
So total would be $140.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept donations.
I move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept the anonymous donation to the Department of Elder and Social Services of gift cards totaling $140 for the Upton Food Pantry.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Next, we have town managers' report.
So the board, you have a hard copy. I emailed that this out in the afternoon. And also I did post this on my Town Manager's page under news and updates. So a brief summary, we're closing in on finalizing FY '25 budget. Met with ThinkCom last week meeting. Kenny Costar, our finance director, is also going to be in attendance this week to work with the finance committee to make final changes and adjustments. Those final adjustments will be made to the finance committee's report that then will be produced and available for people attending town meeting to consider not only budgetary items, but then also the warrant for town meeting. Going into the warrant last week, myself, as well as DPW Director, Police Chief, Fire Chief, attended the capital budget committees meeting, provided presentations of the capital requests that are on this year's warrant, and the capital budget committee voted to favorably recommend all of the capital articles. So we're moving forward. Also, ThinkCom last week voted to consider those as well and voted for those capital articles. The one that they sort of holding off was to see tonight about the BBT with the debt exclusion. They're going to then consider that on Wednesday with the recommendation. Wanted to provide an update on a procurement project. We've published a request for quotes for updating the heat controls for the fire station. This is funded through earmark. Site visit is going to be tomorrow and responses to the request for quotes will be due on the 11th. I anticipate then finalizing, and it's a pretty straightforward contract, finalizing the selection of the winning and responsive proponent or responder and pulling together contract language for the board to approve on April 16th of the next meeting to then get them in to get that work completed. The HVAC system has a older, coming on 25 years old HVAC control system. So it's really needs of upgrades. Speaking of upgrades, and I know I provided the board with an update a couple of meetings ago about town server upgrade. Last week, we migrated all the data onto the new server. We actually needed a designated power supply. So we had to get an electrician to come in so we could make sure that it was getting uninterrupted power. That's where it delayed the migration of the data. Everything's up and running. And on Monday, after maybe a couple of hiccups with some employees who had, you know, sort of shortcuts to the server, resolving those where we've been up and running and things been great. Last meeting, let everyone know that the Town of Upton Annual Scholarship is available. You can go to the town's website. So these would be for Upton residents that are attending either BBT or Men's in Upton, as well as other schools, but for Upton residents to submit applications and for selectment and OMT scholarship funds that fund that scholarship. Candidates night is coming up on April 24th. We have people who pulled papers and submitted them for every elected position. We have two contested seats, one for select board and one for planning board. So again, candidates night is going to be April 24th at the community center at 6:30, right? For the Elder and Social Services Department, today they had a training for scams targeting older adults. That was recorded by our staff with Upton Cable so that we can put it on not only our cable channel, but then also YouTube TV. The ESS department is also working to provide assistance with the police department for implementing a new silver alert program. This program helps identify people with dementia who have wandered or become lost and return them to their homes safely. The ESS department also wanted to highlight that volunteers are invited to a volunteer lunch and scheduled for Friday, April 19th at the community center from 1:00 to 3:00. Lastly, ESS and the Council on Aging lost a valuable community member, Josephine McLaughlin, who had been on the Council on Aging for more than eight years and also involved with many senior programs and volunteering efforts, passed away on March 27th at the age of 93. Wednesday is going to be the wake as well as a funeral mass. So there is information on the ESS website on that, and I can pass it on to the board. For recreation, they're still interviewing. They've received 128 applications for positions. And they're still going to be interviewing through not only this week, but also next week. So it's, there's a lot of counselor positions, lifeguards, training, support staff that make the kids that play the annual program a success. And many of them are the youth of our community. And it's great seeing them all come into town hall and talk about their experience and applying for these positions. Athletic fields are now open for the spring, although with tomorrow's rain, it's going to be a little sloggy out there. They've also finalized their concert schedule and working to execute contracts. So summer is right around the corner. For the finance department, they are already starting to prepare some of the end of year things, namely preparing stipends for longevity as well as for elected board stipends. These typically happen right before the elections. So we're working on those. And we've started to roll out new purchase cards. These are to replace town issued debit cards. And staff will be doing trainings on accessing reports so that they can process any sort of invoices. This is typically for purchasing goods that departments rely on. UniBank, the town's bank, had been telling us that the six cards we had for across town were too many and that they wanted to reduce those technically to comply with procurement. You shouldn't be using debit cards anyways because the money comes out right away. So this is a new process that Jessica's been handling in the treasure collector's office to roll out to departments. For the assessors, they completed 74 abatement applications. Total value for abatements was approximately 100K, which is covered by the assessors overlay budget.
Just replaced my phone and it's doing crazy things.
They also processed property exemptions, and those will be starting to be shown on the fourth quarter property tax bill. So people should look out for those. For land use, planning board submitted four articles for the town meeting warrant. They recently completed their public hearings on articles dealing with amendments to solar overlay, the solar overlay district, new language for 5G small cell technology, a new inclusionary zoning bylaw, and amendments to permit it uses within the Upton Center Business District. They also executed a contract with RKG, the board gave authorization at the last meeting to enter into this contract. And in the next couple of months, they're going to start the community outreach process to help the town plan on how to comply with MBTA communities legislation. DPW, for everyone that has seen that the trucks around town cutting down and trimming up trees around wires, they're going back out to start to remove some of the debris that was cut down. And they are still at catching potables. If anyone does notice anything as far as potable that's come up in the street, please contact DPW main office so they can direct their staff to care of that. Dennis, our director, is also working with town council to finalize acquisition easement for Milford Road Pump Station, which was authorized by the 2023 special town meeting. Board of Health, they're, Upton is part of Blackstone Valley Health Partnership. A number of towns joined together to not only engage professional services that assist in plan review and all that. They've received grant funding for a community health worker. That person is on board to service a number of communities in the Blackstone Valley and has started to meet with ESS to identify opportunities for working with the town and leveraging some of the other work that other towns are doing. They did notify us this morning during department head meeting that 144 West River Street has essentially halted their development. This was an application that was in front of the select board for earth removal. At this time, it appears they have abandoned the plans for to construct a new single family home and will be utilizing the existing structure and existing septic plans, though a new building permit for a garage slash barn has recently been submitted to the department and will go through this review process. So keep the board up to date on that. Library director noticed that there's increased interest in renting the community center for parties. There was a party this past weekend and two more scheduled this month. And while they used to do this before COVID and that sort of halted things for a little bit, this year they started back up passports. And they were anticipating about 15 to 20 a month. They're seeing a doubling of that over 30 a month. So people are definitely going to the library to get their travel plans in order. It is a much more enjoyable experience to go with the post office. Lastly, just a reminder about the Upton Apartments 40B. The next scheduled continued public hearing is April 17th. That's going to be at the community center. At the board's last meeting, we reviewed some plan amendments, changes to the architecture site plan. Those have yet to be actually submitted to the ZBA. My understanding, talking with Michael Antonellis, Director of Land Use, is that the engineers for the proponent are trying to re-engineer the drainage at 140. There's a culvert that then goes under 140. They're trying to address one of the butters concerns. So they're, they're working to finalize revised drainage plans to satisfy some of the concerns. So I anticipate coming up in a couple of weeks, they'll have those available for the ZBA and then they'll start to pay review of that. Some upcoming events, April 15th, Upton Men's Supper at the community center, 4:30. Food is being provided by the Rose Garden. April 24th, Candidates Night. April 25th, 4:30 at the community center is the Upton Police Meatball Dinner for both men's supper as well as the meatball dinner. You can go to the ESS COA website to RSVP. It's also in their newsletter. And two important dates coming up, May 2nd, annual town meeting, 7:00 PM at Monk Reesaw High School, and May 7th, the Upton Annual Town Lunch.
Very good. Any questions?
No questions.
All set?
Awesome.
Okay, good job, Joe. Okay, we have a one day liquor license request for Upton Men's Club Claw and Hole turn.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Lynn Haggerty through the chair. So I had announced we were going to have the Upton cleanup, but I've gotten volunteers to help. So I'm just doing the administrative in the background. So I can give you, thank you, all of these. I can nail them to you.
And if I get it. I'm sorry. Oh, it stayed.
So inside the, I just wanted to let you know, I did. I've been working with Joe. This is going to be in the free press. And it's also, the recreational waiver is built into the Upton side of the website in this link here. And there'll be people on, on April 20th, somebody will be at the DFW for you to sign up to and to check you in. And then it converts to an Excel spreadsheet with all the streets. You can go to the DPW and the police department so they know where everybody is. And that's pretty much that. And I have one other thing to switch hats. I'd like to suggest that maybe we have a volunteer and employees of appreciation day of the board, if we consider that. I think I sent something out. I was just thinking that we don't, being a committee member, a couple committees and a long time volunteer, we don't come together so we don't know one another, so to speak, and know what each, you know, committee is working on. So I thought this would be a good idea and it'd be a good idea to get new members involved. So if, you know, maybe you consider it, maybe a cookout at Kiwanis or something like that.
Sounds good.
Sounds exciting.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing the other day.
Look into that.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, and one day liquor license request for Upton Men's Club Claw and Hole turn. This is something that they're doing every year.
Yes.
Any questions to that?
I don't have any questions.
Nope.
Motion. I move that the board vote to approve the application submitted by the Upton Men's Club event manager, Matt Ronziello, for a special one day all alcohol beverages license for an event at Kiwanis softball field up to Mass, to be held on June 8th, 2024.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action. And we have an update from Colonial Power Group on the town's electric aggregation plan submission. Good evening.
Our capital of Colonial Power, five of the local improvements.
Denise Allen, also at Colonial.
We're here to talk to you tonight about your aggregation plan that has been held up by the public utilities going on three years. I have good news. The department has begun to move things through. You happen to fall in what Denise and I call aggregation purgatory. We're stuck in the middle here and the department is asking for a little bit of direction. I'm not really happy about the direction they're asking from you, but for us to move forward, we just need you to make a decision on a couple of products before this last time through. It did not require you to make these decisions in your plan. Because of rulings that they've made, that's the current precedent. They're asking that you choose some products that we would insert in your plan. Once that's done, I do expect an order rather swift. Good news after the order is there's guidelines that are going to be dispersed. We actually just got the final version of them today around 5:00. Sometime over the next two to three months, those will get approved. And then you'll be able to pick your products and move forward. All of that being said, it still leaves us in a position that we need to discuss. And I'm not certain if this was in your packet or not. It's going to.
It is.
There's a couple of choices that you, perfect. There's a couple of choices that you have. I'll let Denise just kind of quickly run through that. It's six of one, half dozen another, but it is different. And I'll let Denise explain.
Right, so normally when you go out to bid, you'd be looking at pricing for each of the products and making the determination based off what market pricing is at the time when you're going out to bid. But because we have to put this in the plan, we're suggesting both options include three products. So the first, so this is option number one across the top. This is option number two across the bottom. All the way to the left in both cases, this is going to be your default product, your standard product. Meaning when the program launches, everybody who's on basic service, national grid basic service at that time, gets a consumer notification mailed to them, letting them know that they will be automatically switched to the town's program unless they opt out in 30 days. Okay, so that's the standard product. Everybody would get moved to this first call. And then these are two optional products. So when folks are mailed to, it also have this optional product information on it. Folks will be told that they can opt into the optional product if they want a different renewable energy content for their product selection. After you, they can stay with this default product or they can opt out altogether to a program and go back to national grid basic service. Plenty of options. But what the DPU is asking you to do is an option one across the top. This first product in the light green has the same renewable energy content as the utility offers. So in 2024, that's 62% renewable. It would have no additional green in it. So it's going to be your, your most economical option when you go out to bid. And then, oh, I'm sorry, I'm starting, yeah, I apologize. The option one across the top, I apologize. This had, would have additional renewable energy content in it. They're allowing us to put a range. So we're saying five to 50% more than what national grid would offer. And it would be a little more expensive than the utility. And then your first optional product would be the equivalent to the utility in terms of renewable energy. So that would be a little cheaper than the product everyone would get moved to. And then the third product or the second optional product would have even more renewable energy than this standard product. So that would be your most expensive option if folks want to pay a little more to have additional green content. So that's this first row here. The second row is, their product's the same, these two are just flipped. So the standard would be the most economical equivalent to national grid, no additional green. The first optional would be somewhere between 5 to 50% more renewable energy. And you would be deciding that 5 to 50% when you go out to market and look at pricing. That's how we would see that pricing and make a decision. So what you're basically just trying to decide is your standard product. Do you want it to be equivalent to national grid in terms of renewable energy content? Or do you want to have the option at launch to put a little more in there of somewhere between 5 to 50% more green? Would be a little more expensive. And that again is the product everybody would get moved to. So you'd be, it'd be a little increase in price or cheaper option if you were to go number two. Does that make sense? I know it's a lot.
Got it.
Feel free to ask any questions because I started off.
So when you say more expensive, more expensive, the national grid is just more expensive across the board between the places?
Good question. So we still truly, I mean, you're still going to launch under national grid. We would never launch a product, I'm sorry, above national grid. But you're going to take the whole town out. You're still going to get competitive pricing below the national grid rate. So your standard product, whether or not you're at the renewable energy content of the utility or a little bit more, is still going to be under the utility. So you're still going to have advantageous default product.
If it wasn't, we just wouldn't launch. Joe just put aside.
Right.
So you always stop program in that scenario.
I know everyone's excited about their electric bill later.
Right.
I just didn't want to get, I just didn't want to get lynched. I gotta make sure.
We've been through some very difficult times in the last two years. So I fully understand why they're saying.
Yeah, we fully expect the first two, in either case, you're going to have savings. Yeah, but this would be the more, you know, a little more pricey for additional renewable, a little higher level. It's just, do you want to, do you want to go the most economical for the product everybody gets moved to or potentially? We're talking a couple of milts here. We're not talking, yeah, we're not talking pennies more. It's just what you feel more comfortable with.
Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have an opinion.
Okay.
And just to summarize, right, like either option one or option two is going to save the rate payer from what their bill would be if we weren't offering these programs. So let's be clear about that for everybody's sake. And then the question is, do we want to default people into a plan that will sit, these are my words, save them a little less money? Or do we want to default them into a plan that will save them a little more money? I think our taxes are high enough. So if I'm going to default somebody to anything, I'm going to make it the lowest cost thing possible. If people want to opt into greening the community, they can do that. I'm a fan. If it were me, I would default to option one so that we would save a little bit less money, but have more renewable energy in the package. But I'm not comfortable making that decision for 8,000, you know, or whatever, just 2,600 homeowners in the town. That's my opinion.
My, my opinion is I prefer to have people opt in versus mandatory. If you don't opt out, you're stuck with it, especially because the US post office is not always the most efficient. So I would rather have people, if they want to join, they opt in. You know, I know they'll get the same mailing, but I don't want to hear. I know years ago I was opted in and then all of a sudden my electric bill went through the roof when it ended and I didn't know why. And I called to say, why is my electric bill so much? And they're like, oh, well, you have this different supplier. And I had no idea I had been transferred in.
I think that's going to happen automatically regardless. So be aware of that.
So we're all gonna, anyone who's on national grid basic service at launch will get the letter and will be automatically opted in to the default product, whatever that may be, if you don't opt out. And then you would, from there, if you didn't opt out of the program, you would have the opportunity to stay where the town puts you or you could opt in or opt up or down as the case may be to one of those other.
I think this is something, that's fine, but that's something we're really going to need to make residents aware of. Right.
And everybody will get a mailing and it's clearly marked when you need to. There's a postage paid card in the envelope that folks can just sign and mail back. You can call a phone owner, you can go online. There's many methods. We'll be out for information sessions, press releases. We'll get Joe, the website and all that will be hitting from all angles. So everyone knows that this is, certainly no one opens their ballot reads, you know, I understand what you're saying. It does happen.
Make sure that we really get this out there.
Especially the day that the.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's where.
Suppliers come out for the.
I don't know about you, but I get consistently, you know, junk mail with different energy products.
Why, yes.
This will be different because this will also have the town seal. So there'll be something that is a little bit more specific. We have this in town where I live and every two years when that becomes an option, they're sending that out. They're making available public meetings to learn more about it. The, the public outreach is absolutely important to educate people. I also know that we have residents who have come from other towns that are asking, where the heck is our aggregation program? And why don't we have that? So I think it, it definitely is something we need to educate and tell people that because the opt, the automatic enrollment will scare people. Because they're going to be worried that something is catching them by surprise and what the intended. And that's where going through even the, the, the process to select companies to then essentially provide our product is going to be important to identify that along the way so that we exactly know what we're doing going ahead and what the impacts would be.
Maybe the council on aging could hold some kind of meeting for the seniors.
Absolutely.
On the.
Absolutely.
Very helpful sessions at the, yeah, come on.
Definitely. And council on age, you maybe want here too at night.
Yeah.
We'll certainly come to answer all the questions. However, the town feels most comfortable with its council on age and you want to get it, you want it in the afternoon, but more than have to do all of that in person meeting.
Do we have any idea about when this is all going to happen?
So I'm just going to tell you, I, I expect the chairman of the Department of Public Utilities is mandated to get rid of the backlog. So I expect you to get an order. If you were to make a decision tonight on your product and we get this moving, I would expect you to get an order sometime in the next two to three months. I mean, which you've been waiting a long time. I'm saying to you, that would be light speed in aggregation time. But I would expect to get something, say, let's just say we call it you. Get out in the marketplace, see what was there compared to National Grid, so forth. Then we can make a decision to start maybe, you know, October, November timeframe. Might be somewhere in that timeframe with a, with a program might be able to get up and running. I, I do believe it's very possible this year it happens. I can promise you, you will get an order. It is changed dramatically at the Department of Public Utilities.
What is the impetus for us even offering this, right? Like, is your, to your concern about automatically people opting in or, or they're opted in automatically unless they do something, right? Like anytime we change someone's anything without them doing anything, like people's default is to not do anything. So the question I have is where is the mandate to actually do this at all coming from? And we, I know it's well intentioned, right? It's obviously, we're trying to save people money. We're trying to do the right thing for our taxpayer, our rate payers, the people that live in Upton. This, this is a way to get them to save money. But why is it, why is it required as opposed to a choice that they could have? In other words, why do we have to, why do they have to opt out?
So in the statute, 164, 134, that's the municipal statute, it's required to be an opt out. And that's the way that you're able to get the most advantageous pricing. Because if we said, oh, we're going to do an opt in program, that's exactly what third party suppliers do. They don't know who's going to sign up, how long they're going to sign up, what, what the usage is. This program, you're able to get all the usage and get a, an actual price for the load of options.
So is the state requiring that town municipalities offer aggregate aggregation plans?
They're not required. This is optional. This is the town.
So we have a choice to say, we don't want to offer our community an aggregation plan. And that's. Because that would, that would address your concern. I just want to make sure. Because there's a distinction, right? Like we're, it's sort of a false choice here because we're, we're given option one or option two, but option three is don't offer the community aggregation and let them pay their higher rates. But I don't know if that's.
I think as long as we, I, I think last time it came out, I had no idea it even existed. I mean, this was years ago, the first time it came out. And I don't know if it was when it ended or something happened and I ended up calling Texas to cancel. And I couldn't figure out how my electric was coming out of Texas. But if, as long as we inform everyone that this is coming, this is something that if you don't want to belong to, to opt out, because, but by the same token, I have some people I know that are older and they have electric heat and they've been choked the last year or so. And, you know, they're like, look, we built this house to stay in here forever. And it's not, when someone says it's not the taxes, it's the electric bill, it's not pretty. So I think as long as we do a wonderful education and let people know as best we can that, look, this is going to be coming maybe the June timeframe. It's going to take effective, maybe the November timeframe. If you don't want this, when you get that card, say no. But if you throw it away, you're going in. I think as long as we're pretty clear, I'm fine.
And we expect that no matter what, it's going to save you money.
Right, yeah. The big picture is we're going to try to save you money. Yeah, yes.
And the one thing I do want to say, just because someone threw it, doesn't mean that they look at their bill, their vacation when it starts and they look at their bill the next month, they can opt out at any time without, they can get back in at any time without fear penalty. So it's true that the town is giving.
So it doesn't lock in, like if they're, they're defaulted, they're automatically opted in. It's not like after two months, they notice it and they go, oh, wait, I didn't want this. Now they can take action and no harm, no foul, no penalty.
Exactly. You're bringing that much that never existed before.
Yes.
We'll stay so many, a little bit.
Anyway.
And they can get out if they're.
Exactly, exactly. And they can ask the questions.
They can come back and later if they.
Okay.
I think, yeah, because you're right, Joe. Every time you turn around, you get something from an energy company. It's like a, it's like a car warranty.
And I think it's also important that while Mark may have identified a potential timeline, if we get product prices in that either aren't advantageous or like it's almost the same, you can wait six months, wait to see if the market corrects. Because if there's no savings, why, or if there's very minimal.
It's not accomplishing the goal of intent.
To then see if the, if the market changes. So there's, there's still a lot that's, that we're going to have to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm a fan of, I'm a fan of defaulting people into the lowest cost option.
I would agree. I would agree also, Brett. I think that's, makes the most sense.
So that would be, no.
There you go.
You guys are the experts.
That was easy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Next item on our agenda is expression of varying utilities in Center.
Okay, so from our last meeting and made some progress, getting a little bit more information. And next week I'm scheduling a conference call with people with the Planning Division for National Grid to learn more about what's going to be involved. But basically what ended up, what happens is that the engineering is on our, our shoulders. That we end up submitting a proposal saying, we want to be able to do this. So we're going to have to have sort of some amount of work done upfront to, to, to sort of submit for their consideration. Knowing that this is, there's a lot of things that are involved. There's a lot of plans that Mastod is still working on for the tip project that we need to evaluate. There's, when we meet with National Grid next week, we'll get a better understanding as far as how they assist communities. I've reached out to some towns to sort of get some, some understanding of their experience and what they, they saw through the process. But we don't have all of that for tonight. And in talking to an engineer, it was sort of commented that you really need to seed a little money to determine the feasibility. Would this work and can we get enough information to make a decision point on what orders of magnitude of work, what orders of magnitude of money? Because we may spend, spend a couple thousand to, to look at an issue and then all of a sudden we've, this is, this is literally running into a brick wall. We might as well stop because maybe there's environmental issues that would be prohibitive to overcome. Or we go down the road and we find out here's what it is, what the cost is. And then we, as, as a board discuss potentially bringing more of a funding article for town meeting, knowing if you have to do engineering and this is the order of magnitudes, we're likely what we do for billing projects, putting it out in front of the voters. So the thought was if we used up to 25,000, that would be essentially seed money to allow for us to look at this. The August, September is really a decision point for us for the special town meeting in the fall. So it gives us some funding to look down and see what, what can happen. Is this feasible to pursue? And then we can either decide to go forward, put something on the warrant, or we're at the point like, maybe this isn't going to work. Maybe there are a lot of challenges that just may be a little bit more difficult to overcome.
From where to where did you want everything to. From what end to what end?
That's part of the feasibility and the assessment to see how far it could go and where the, what the options are. I don't think anybody's decided what. I'm clearly the immediate center of town, right? So like between Town Hall and Holy Angels and United Parish and Eight Grove Street, sort of that little zone here. But how far it goes up? Does it go to the community center or not? I don't know. Does it go up to the super or not? I don't know. Like I, nobody, nobody knows. We have to, we have to decide.
The underground water that comes from springs and Center Park.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's all part of the engineering feasibility, right? Because we don't know what we don't know. So.
It's a bridge over here as you come around corner of that, because of how that's constructive, that may be an impediment. And why then you just come this side and then you put them underground? So there's some of those things that using these, these funds would help define it, but then also define it budgetarily as well. And it is, it's a one in a hundred year opportunity to have this investment from the state putting it in. So to at least determine if it's feasible. If something all of a sudden is, is just would not work, we're going to probably know that fairly soon.
And I think that was one of the things you said to me when we were sort of talking about. It's like even the first $25,000, like if Joe has a phone call tomorrow with someone and they say, oh, you, something, something we didn't know immediately tells us like it's impossible, like you just can't do it for a reason A, reason B, reason C that we just don't know. Like we won't even spend the $25,000. Like we're not going to spend money if we know it's not feasible. But it's sort of that up to the $25,000 to figure out, is there any there, there, right? Is it something that's.
So that's something we could do with the special town meeting?
For like the feasibility money? I, we have that as we could decide now whether or not we wanted to open it, put it on the warrant, close it and then execute the warrant. I have two versions of the warrant ready.
And the one.
With it and one without.
The reason we were even considering that is just because of the timing. Like we don't want to delay the tip project. If we don't have to, right? So the sooner we can do the assessment, I, I'm, I'm just saying, well, you know, why, why would we think about doing it now versus waiting until the fall? It would be because of the timing and the fact that the tip project is nearing 75% design completion. So we'd want to signal at least to the state as soon as possible that we were going to be exploring this.
So where would the 25,000 come?
I wish it's in free cash. Roughly. I'm not going to hold you to that.
We're still going to have about 900,000 in free cash. After these capital items come off, we had some capital items from the special town meeting back in November, where we have 3.6. Let me just see. I did calculate this out so I can guess a little bit more.
How much have we got coming out this year?
Um. Because I have a spreadsheet on this.
And also too, just, I mean, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but if these people watching aren't sure, like this discussion is just about putting the $25,000 on the warrant so the town meeting floor can vote it up, vote it up or not, right? They might say, right, if, if, if town meeting says, you're crazy, we're not spending a dime on this, then we're done.
We're done.
We're done.
We're done.
We're done. And it's easy. And it's easy, right? So that, so that's, that's like, that's part of it too. I think we would probably have a, I, I at least would want to engage in a little more discussion and sort of talking to the community before we like committed to spending the $25,000. But this is almost a way of doing that because we can have the conversation and let the folks that show up at town meeting have their voice and vote. And you know what? If they think it's worth looking at for $25,000, then great. If they don't, then fine. We've, we've done everything we can do as a board to give the community the option to share their voices and votes. Yes.
Trying to open up. Oh, there we go. So. So including what we spent at special town meeting, we will still have 1,100 and free cash. And everyone cross their fingers, that amount includes 125K for snow and ice.
I'm glad for cash. Better than snow this week.
I was going to say the forecast.
Don't even.
It's now.
Don't even give voice. Hush. Hush, I need to be somewhere early Thursday morning and I do not want to be driving in something that's not just wet and is colored instead.
Mm hmm. So also because we're holding off on the police cell block. How much? Putting cell 60. Um, so assuming, because we still have snow and ice still on the budget. We haven't spent all of it.
And then what was the floor on the fire department?
It's going to be under 100K. And that's the amount we set aside for that.
As a board.
So you really haven't talked to anyone and said, you know, I know you said you talked to some engineers, because we do have water all around. And then we've got water right there. We've got it on Grove Street. We've got it by the telephone.
So that, and that's where.
And that, but we can't, we won't know until we vote this and have, nobody has said to you, you know, like you say, Brett, you, you're surrounded by water. Electricity and water don't mix. I mean, because I don't know if anybody has looked at it that much, or this is what's needed to have somebody to go there.
We're going to continue as we get closer to town meeting. This meeting with National Grid will probably connect us with other people. I've already asked District Three for their progress prints for utilities to try to identify elevations and processes to see where things are so that we can try to communicate back with National Grid. Because as part of the tip project, they're also putting in new drainage because they're changing the configuration. So we may have additional information that the board may say, okay, we're passing over. Or recommending to go forward because there's potentially enough there that it's worth study.
And we should like. Obviously, we have three votes. We should each vote any way we want. I'm not trying to swear or influence or, and no judgment if you guys don't think it's a good idea. The water issue, like as. How, power lines are in the rain. There's power lines running up. Like it's, it's not really an option. It's a question of cost. It's not feasibility. It's not like you. it, it's, it's not really an op, it, it's a question of cost. It's not feasibility. It's not like you can't put the utilities underground because there's a, a culvert that goes through like, no, no, of course you can. You just have to pay to do it. Like all the stuff's above ground now getting, rained on and snowed on and iced on and trees falling on it. So, you know, some would argue that it's more protected and it's more secure if it's underground than above ground. So, it, just wanna be mindful of the fact that you can, you can put utilities anywhere.
Has DOT done any of those plans on the roundabout? Do they show any of these underground springs that are all over town?
They don't even show the culvert that takes, um, this stone, uh, channel and bring it underneath. They don't show that.
That you could kind of flash that even watch.
They basically say it ends. So that's where I'm, I'm trying to work with the engineer that was hired by Mastod to get a better understanding of some of these things. And, um, uh, uh, in talking to people, the, the people they said to start having a conversation first with was National Grid. Um, mainly because of the fact that, um, uh, they also need to be able to identify, what the load potential is, location for transformers. Because we're really, when you look outside, there's a confluence of a lot of wires. Um, uh, the national grid infrastructure was, was sort of identified as talk to them first, identifying what they're gonna need. What are some of the challenges? How you can accommodate that? Um, the, the subsurface drainage stuff, those are usually at specific elevations. Um, the, uh, uh, where you put the conduit, um, that can change because it's not as susceptible to, freezing from winter, things like that. Um, so, you know, water is typically four feet underground at a minimum. And that's where some of these things, we definitely need to, to have better idea of what the state has inventoried and especially is proposing. Cause they are relocating some of the catch bases. Um.
So that means they could run into these.
They could, they could, but they may also, the, um, the conduit may be above. And they basically run it in the utility banks and then getting an understanding as far as those dimensions, what are the rooms? That's where.
I mean, they're moving all the utilities anyway, right?
They have to.
I know, but I mean, are there, does this water, is it free flowing or does it go through culverts underneath the road or what?
Uh, I do know from Dennis that they cameraed, um, this, it goes from stone to a stone culvert to then, um, it's piped and then comes out by Rustine. Um, so it's free flowing. There's not an issue. It's, it's for the flow. It's adequately sized. Um, they're not touching it as part of this project, which at least tells me that, um, there's, there's no issue that they've identified structurally or, uh, with the line itself that they needed to correct. And we also don't know those elevations. So that's something that, uh, working with Dennis, we may be able to get a better idea, um, of what that looks like.
It's a pleasure.
I think, I think it's gonna be more involved than any of us realize, but, um, perhaps we should, see if the townspeople wanna even take a look at it.
Well, um, when would they be able, when would DOT be able to give you some kind of an answer?
I'm hope, I'm hoping that we'll have more, um, information in the next thirty days. Um, they did not indicate they exactly knew where the utilities division was on being ready for seventy-fifth. Um, uh, and what I mean by seven, seventy-five, um, percent designs, drawings. Um, that to me, is a little concerning because it throws their construction schedule that they told us a year ago, way off schedule. So if they were like in a month, we're scheduling that, that public hearing for seventy-five percent. And then in three months going out to hundred, we may have missed that window, but, there's potentially, if this project shifts a couple of years, that could be our window. And it becomes a question, is that possibility of having that project delayed two, three years, enough to at least ask the question, is this feasible? We may find very quickly it's not.
I wish we had a better answer on feasibility before we put money before the townspeople, but you seem to think it's twenty-five thousand. And we'll be able to make an intelligent determination, yes or no?
Yeah.
They may just get in there and.
Yeah, I mean, we might, we might have one meeting with Mass Electric and they laugh at us. I mean, who knows?
Yeah.
You know?
And that may.
I just wish we had that meeting to laugh before we.
You know? There are things I like better that are black and white, but, um, uh, you know, I, I am, at the end of the day, I don't think it's the board that should decide anything. I think it's the people. And if the people that show up on town meeting floor want to study this, they'll vote it in. If they don't want to study it, they think we're all, a little bananas, then they're just gonna give us that look and vote it right down.
Well, they need the opportunity.
Exactly. But I'm a big one to give them the opportunity. So I would say I would be in favor of giving the townspeople the opportunity, to make the decision, not us.
And we need to reopen the annual town meeting.
In order to insert that article in, so.
Would you like to make the motion, Mr. Times?
Which, uh, was the next item?
The next.
Discussion dependence. Okay. So the, the next, here we go. I move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Ten, to reopen the warrant for the Thursday, May second, twenty twenty-four, annual town meeting to insert a new article, funding a feasibility study for burying utilities in Upton Center, Center, and to immediately close said warrant.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Should be your call.
I don't think I have.
All right. So now I would think that we would, um, execute the May second, twenty twenty-four annual.
So in, in your packet was the, the full version without this article. Um, but you have the article and the explanation in the packet. Um, all I'd be doing is basically inserting it. I think I, I slotted in that article, um, twenty-seven, before we got to all the zoning ones. Um, so I have two verses. I did print out two copies for you since.
Don't wanna kill any more trees.
Exactly. Um, but I do have the, the signature pages. So the only difference between, uh, what you see in your packet is the watermark. All the other language, um, is all corrected. All the numbers are, have been updated. Staff has gone through it, um, five million times by now. Um, so, um, then all it ends up being.
It's a challenge for you, Laura.
I was gonna say, nobody called me. Wait till we get to the minutes.
Just as long as you give me a hard copy, I.
Just, just once I give it to you, I don't keep a copy of it. But yes, you most certainly have. Um.
Do you need a motion? Is that who executed the town?
I move that the board votes assign the May second, twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant and to direct the posting of the warrant.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Thank you Denise for coming.
So, and I have six copies according to what Denise would like for all of the copies. Um, so that as, as we go through before we, um, adjourn the meeting, we just need everyone's John and God.
Okay.
You know, I'm saying that as it came out, like, this document you're gonna end it, I'm gonna go down and stamp it, see it.
Um, I can print off the email I sent you because that's.
I just didn't know if you had a copy here.
Oh, unfortunately, yeah.
If you're done with the warrant and all of those things, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Denise, thank you.
Can you get back to my?
You wouldn't have got very far.
It's like my car. I have it in my pocket with my top. I'm not gonna.
I know.
Okay. Next we have discussion on proposed Main Street improvements and up the, up in center on forty.
Okay, so I'm gonna, basically just ruin your computer setup.
Okay.
Um, I'm showing it to, these are the most, they relevant. Make sure, because this really focuses in on the, um, the discussion that we just had, starting at five thirty PM with a butter. So we, we mailed out postcards for about thirty butters, uh, and the, uh, Upton Center corridor specifically because we wanted to get, um, show them the changes to their front doors, their driveways and their businesses. Um, so, uh, a year ago, Mastod came in twenty-five percent design hearing and I think dropped a bomb saying, well, this is a state highway. Um, this is a state route. There is no parking on one forty. Um, that evening, there was a lot of comments saying you can't do that. It's gonna impact the businesses. Um, we had Representative Murray in as well as, uh, Senator Fattman here, uh, heard comments and heard from their constituents saying there's gotta be something else. And, um, reviewing with Mastod at subsequent meetings, uh, what they, uh, came up with was essentially a compromise plan, that puts parking, uh, in two locations, either side of this intersection out here, in front of Country Super. So from, uh, uh, the Moran Repair Shop, down past, um, uh, Country Super, parking would be on that side of Main Street. On the other side would be the bike. And if, if a board and anyone, uh, watching may recall, the state was calling for two bike lanes on both sides and basically told us, well, just don't issue tickets. That, um, really doesn't help the motorists who are parking, blocking a bicycle lane, where you may have someone that wants to bicycle along Main Street. Um, so we presented this plan, identified, um, on-street parking is within this range, comes through and ends, uh, right here in front of Rustine. Uh, of course you wouldn't be able to park in front of people's driveways, uh, which is exactly what we have out there. Um, so the difference is that we're then gonna have a eight-foot wide sidewalk, between the end of the sidewalk against people's properties right now and the roadway. That is gonna be a multi-use path, um, where, uh, if you get people riding a road bike, they're still gonna be in it. But kids, families, they'll use this, this, um, multi-use path. Um, uh, then you'll have the parking and when you transition, coming in, they're gonna be on-street, um, up onto this shared app, I'm out. And then when we come to Upton Center. And I'll ask up and cable during this period to take the PDF, put it us on the screen so people can see in the video. Uh, they'll transition back down. I, I'm sorry. This, this will be on the other side. They're gonna stay on this and then come through and they'll use the crosswalks to get to the other sides. Um, they're, they're coming up, we can correcting some alignment issues with Church Street, putting in sidewalks where currently this is just open pavement, and or mud, depending on the season you're in, correcting ADA issues with the crosswalks that come to, uh, the, the town common. Uh, we have the roundabout alteration of configuration coming into the roundabout from Grove Street that will actually kick, the Grove Street on the Rustine side curb out, actually giving more green space than what we currently have because they, they'll be taking a little bit off the tip of it, but we're getting much more back than we had. We do lose, um, three parking spaces here, in the town lot. They'll just reconfigure, uh, that. Um, and coming out of, I mean, out of common. By the community center. So, right here and here, these are where they're gonna be flashing. These won't. The reason is that, um, with all the activity here, you really wanna draw someone's attention to that there's a crosswalk here.
Yeah.
This one, there won't be, um, uh, flashing. I guess on these two. That's right. And that's where people tend to be going fast.
Yes.
Yeah, people are speeding. This is, this here is really just dimensions. This line, um, isn't anything. This is then, a, a level, a mountable concrete to differentiate the surface type. Right. So, um, the tip project that they just finished in South Grafton, when you're coming up one twenty-two, and you wanna take that left to go on one twenty-two A, how that had concrete, flat island, that's what this treatment would be. So visually, it's distinct, surface-wise, it would be noticeable, but it's gonna be mountable. So large trucks, as trucks are gonna have to come and they're gonna have to, to come across. This will also be mounted. Um, yeah.
I guess ones and others, which look for, is there not multiple of all the curbs broken?
No.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Um.
Who wanna learn from our neighbors?
Yes.
So right in front of the Thompson Block, um, this right here is the property line. Property line, the right-of-way line is right up against their, the buildings. So they're gonna have, they're gonna, this will at least allow for an opportunity for more of a streetscape, benches, other treatments out front.
Uh, like they get tables up.
Yep.
For serving ice cream or whatever.
Exactly. Yeah. Um, you know, the common, it's impacted at the tip of it, where we'll lose probably about two feet, but then, uh, right, it's gonna be a little wider. They're gonna reconstruct this. We'll lose a little on, on this side. But essentially we're staying within the existing footprint. The monument technically could stay. They may recommend shifting it back just a little bit, just to give additional, um, clearances. Parking is sort of reintroduced in this area. This, that's what this is. Taking us down the road, but I love it. So in front of Men and Feather, this is parking as well.
Good.
Um, and coming, as you come into the center on this, uh, sort of north side, you have a bike lane that transitions into this multi-use path that continues through. And as you come out of the center, there's some parking here or no. Um, this is gonna be some parking right in here.
Yes.
Um, and then it's just stripes to sort of maintain this traveling.
Yeah.
And as you're coming out past Holy Angels, this multi-use path will continue past the community center entrance, past the VFW entrance and then transition to a bike lane. So this is something on a staff level, we ask for them to extend this beyond both because realistically the visitors of, um, with the shared parking agreement.
Yep.
Um, you may recall the police chief wanted to redesign the, sorry, the entrance. So this is a one-way coming in by the, like community center and then further, um, uh, east, that's two-way. So these entrances are also as part of this project, being one reduced, one expanded, um, to reinforce that because this is just, coming out next to the building is just too dangerous. You just can't see people up this way.
Yeah.
Right. So we did share with them, um, our construction plans, the ASBILs, uh, and talked with them about what we want, how we wanna see this married with the community center. Um, so one of the main things that I don't think people may realize, um, there's a lot of accessibility obstacles in the center. If someone is on prejudice in a wheelchair or an assistive device, there's a lot of, um, uh, barriers. And, um, you know, this corrects all of that with the Upton Center. So comments that were received while once the initial shock sorry, once the initial shock wore off. Because it's been a year since people saw these plans. This started becoming more comfortable, but they did highlight a concern about parking in general and about the town maybe finding other ways to find additional parking to make it available for some of the businesses. We relate that we're continuing to work to finalize plans to re-strike and redo this parking lot that will pick up an additional eight parking spaces.
How do we do?
Yes. The gravel lot will, as part of the capping due to the remediation, that is going to be capped with asphalt, i.e. parking. There was even people said, well, can we do anything with Racine? And I mentioned incidentally with Mastod, that side yard where we took down the old building at Port, Portman. Mastod said, you know, you can come in and just have a small parking lot and then a pathway to connect down to Grove Street. So there's some of these other things that if this project is also delayed, we can work together as a
There's a little bit of parking on Grove Street.
Yeah, there is. And we did have someone think they're going to re-strike that soon. When they re-strike the parking lot for the community center. Yeah. They're going to do this. So new handicap parking spaces, they were, they were going to re-strike some to supply with some ADI things. When they do that work, he's just going to do this law. So get it all together.
Okay, that's good.
I think that looks much, much, I mean, I didn't look beyond to three that we just looked at, but those three are way better than first.
Huge improvement.
Huge improvement. So, good job.
Thank you.
He's changing us down.
Yeah, once we down the vice. Okay. And discussion for proposed 40B or 47B. Sorry, put the letter in. Have we established a letter that requests we have those letters put on the exam?
Um, I haven't because I wanted to see if we wanted, how we wanted to handle that, whether we want to reinforce some of the general comments, especially knowing that they haven't even submitted those revised plans. If the board would like me to prepare a letter to reinforce the height of the architect, fix fitting in with the name, making sure that drainage concerns raised by the neighbors were pressed, sort of hitting the top 10 list of the multi-page document, I can easily prepare something and then pull board and order Smith. Or if the board wanted to take a look at the document on the 16th and then submit it on the 17th. I want to see if there's anything that may be be revised plans sort of triggered for conditional comments. I think many of the comments that were first raised are still relevant. The design didn't change so significantly that where the board is saying, that is exactly what we it's altered the architecture a little, but it's not a departure. It's not a redesign.
So does he, does he have to re-imply or does he do then to application makes up or receiving?
All these different, you guys just submitting revised like plan engineering and architecture on all plans. But those have visibility yet. No, they have. Because they're trying to do some fine-tuning of the drainage engineering plans at the entrance associated with their driveway and 140 and the solve rate that goes underneath it. Right, Kevin. Has submitted comments, Mastod's involved looking at it as well. So I, there, what I pulled from my analysis, they're looking at making some changes to address some of those those comments before submitting. So I'll prepare a a executive summary of that that letter. And because it's basically hitting all those points, I can send it just to each of you separately, just to make sure there's anything you think you need to revisit or try to.
Okay, the two more of the minutes. I only have two. At the St. Luke meeting, it still says that Solomon Head adjourned the meeting of 10:17. It's in there.
I'm, I'm, I'm by no means denying, I'm opening it up right now because I swear and I changed that. Because even in the email to all of you, I said, I took care of this. So maybe I'm just making sure. I didn't like revise dates for this meeting. I just want to make sure I have the right document.
And while you're looking, I really like the fact that she put on the bottom of this meeting that it's approved on and the Excel sheet. I think going forward.
That's what we need.
That's exactly what we needed and maybe we never get this far behind again, but just in case.
No, I mean, I'm
That distance right up Laura's alley.
I'm using that going forward because it is, if we get busy and it's late, we just move something off.
Yes.
Family and that's, that's when things get lost.
It is.
I know I changed.
On the email that I got.
No, I'm looking, I'm looking on the server for the one that I changed and it still said October date.
And then November 7.
But the, the main thing is I, because I had watched the tape, the time was correct, which just
Yes.
urgent. Okay.
November 7th. That meeting was adjourned 11/22.
I can't tell by that meeting, that's I took that from. Uh, hold on, I'm just, I'm just making this because Laura's are going to be more substantive.
Yeah.
They're right.
Congratulations. I thought, I thought that November 7th was the only one I didn't pick up on, but you did. That's funny.
Okay, that's, that's done.
And just third, we go to vote the minutes. The only minute, the only one is November 14th. Just so we probably should vote that seven. So that's the only one.
You're talking about the motion to approve. So you don't have an evidence on it?
No.
Um, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Do you want me to tell you all of my lovely positions? Or some of them are not, are not major. So for, I can go alphabetically, I can go.
So if you have those, if you can review for the board, your comments, if it's like
No, I'll review my comments. Yeah, there's, there's a couple of minor things. I'll give these all to you at the end.
Okay.
It wasn't, so Laura answered the date on the November 7th. On November 14th, on page six, commas between in the lines 181 and 182, commas between the names. On 194, the word should be and, not and, A N D. 209, the correct name is Country Club Super, E R, not Country Club Soup.
S O P E.
Yeah, yes, legally it's
Not S O O.
Subak, Subak. Not Subak, but yeah, so that was, that was the only changes I have. On December 19th, on page two, line 53, I think the word, it should be, and they questioned the word when should be inserted, the improvements could be completed. Line 66, Brett Simon's move that they, not that don't require on the next page on line 84. It reads including the status of the exercise room, however, there have been some issues with lack of visibility. I think the word however should come out. And then there's just a spacing issue with the word use on page on line 145, page four. The town was not successful in receiving funding under the complete street program. He recommended revisiting the plan. And it says, and the state has not increased funding. That didn't make sense to me.
Okay.
So maybe a clarification there because it looks like somebody was cutting and pasted. Okay. Same thing, line 152, instead of Mr. Westgate reviewed, Mr. Westgate commented. And then same thing, line 163, it reads town manager Joseph Layden said that he would update the priority, will update and provide priority. Just clarification. On January 2nd of 2024, just on line 67, it should be associated with a D, not associate. Line 74, it should be statement, not state. Sure, everyone at home is thrilled with me. On line 117, take out the word for, F O R. On the 16th. They should know, I read it.
Oh, yes. I was going to try to keep up with the edits, but then
No, no.
And my computer froze, so.
Yeah, no, well, I can give you these. I know your color lines, so I tried to circle things as well as highlight because I can't remember what color you can't see. Just on 106, it should be is, not if. On, and then on page, line 124, Brett Hill, to be consistent, both words should be capitalized. Line 128, DPW director spoke with, it should be her because it's talking about Mrs. Amberzino. On February 6th, just on page 70, the words included in should be there. Same thing on line 137, it's, it says first, and I think that was just a typo. It shouldn't be there. There's a period on line 157 that doesn't belong to the middle sentence. February 20th, line 7, 8,500 should have a comma to be consistent with everything else. Line 60 and 68 are just commas. Line 86, it says, and RFB is a boy, and I think that should be an RFP is a boy.
Oh, actually, sorry, without being of the context, then be forbid.
Yeah, so, so you can take a look at it. I wasn't sure. On page 150, it says, she said she asked for, I, I think it's redundant. I think it's just typos. There was on page six, there was, instead of, there were some different words. It was unclear, so I think if you reread the sentence and you capitalize, put in a period up on 208, put a period after trees, capitalize A on the word and, put a comma. And then instead of consultations, I believe it's common. And instead of, on line 230, instead of form, it should be from. And then on line 236, it says B, ins, as two words instead of B, it's B I N G S. I had a question on page seven. It said, Mr. Antonella said he did reach out to District 3, and I wasn't sure if it was District 3 or DOT.
DOT, District 3.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll expand.
You can, yes.
Expand it so that.
I think if you read these, if, if there's just, those are some of the questions I had. The big one, the executive session.
So
January 6th, 2023.
Yeah, that Laura had was around.
You're not. Well, no, but why was it there?
Because they haven't been voted. And that's when
That
I didn't know if this got, I didn't know if we actually had an executive session a year later on the same night and things just get confused.
Now that
I know, I think
That's what it said, just a sad application of a template.
Could be.
And
But I was finding
Doesn't it feel like you've been on this thing though? It feels like it's been that long. Because I can't get the text. Well, we'll correct that.
Yeah, so, but other than that, other than, you know, like I said, it was minor edits, but I laughed when I saw this one. It's like, I'm like, I don't remember any of this. So I was like, no wonder.
So do you want, do we want to approve November 14th?
Second.
Yeah, we do, yes. You got all the dates?
I do, yes.
So then through the executive, we'll do the executives, is that separate? Okay, so we'll approve November 14th. I make a motion to approve the November 14th, 2023 minutes with evidence.
All seconds, all those in favor. Aye. The R A action. And now the motion.
And I have a motion to approve the November 7th, 2023, the December 19th, 2023, the January 2nd, 2024, the January 16th, 2024, the February 6th, 2024, the February 20th, 2024 minutes with reagents.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we got them up. Do you want to approve the, the two executive sessions that I have?
That would be Brett and
Is it
January 23rd, 2023?
Was that just a template to get mixed in?
Just make sure.
It says, well, it says Steve Tell.
Just wanted to see what. Uh, no, those, that, that's the correct date.
It's just the wrong template up top.
No, but you weren't on the board of January 23rd.
That was they haven't been voted.
Right, so this is all correct.
So I will say
You can What is the date?
January 23rd, 2023.
Is this the date? Correct. I make a motion to approve the January 6th, 2023 executive session meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so already action, one each.
One such. So I made a motion, we approve the executive session meeting minutes from November 28th, 2023 and September 5th, 2023.
Second motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Joe can have a ball with all my edits because he just You all ready to go?
Your meeting, I would stay here as long as you let it as long as
No, you won't.
I sure will. There will. This is my priority. This is my priority work in your mind.
I'm all those, I take a motion to adjourn.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm not making a motion to adjourn.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.